In circumstances and I will be chairing the meeting. So it is six oh one, I will call the meeting to order. Irene, could you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Bagby. Try again. Councilmember Bagby. I see that she's here, still muted.
There, I'm here.
Councilmember Lance.
Present.
Councilmember Walter.
Present.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Present.
Thank you. For Mayor Turner. He has an excused absence.
Okay, so now we'll go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance. If you would join me, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Thank you. And I want to make a change to the agenda regarding to vote on the consent calendar just on all except for because I have to recuse myself from number four. So that's the only change to the agenda.
Adam Vice Mayor, I believe I will probably be pulling item four, so that's fine.
Okay, so any report out of closed session?
No reportable action was taken in closed session.
Thank you. And I just did the conflict of interest declaration for the agenda review. Any other changes or deletions to the agenda? Councilmembers? None? Okay. So now we're going to have public comments and Irene, could you be so kind to read the instructions to make sure that whomever is interested in doing a public comment is informed on how to proceed, please?
Yes, of course, Vice Mayor. Just to remind everyone that this meeting is being conducted pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order N 2920, in which the city council members are participating in the meeting remotely via teleconferencing or other electronic means, which are consistent with the executive order, which suspended certain requirements of the Brown Act. For public comments, when asked to do so by our Vice Mayor, those wishing to address the council, Zoom attendees will all be muted until they are called upon. Please use the raise your hand icon on your smart device or computer, or if you're calling in, simply dial star nine. And then you will have three minutes.
Okay, we have some hands raised and I want to remind the public and the council that due to government code, it's prohibiting cities from voting or discussing an issue that is not on the agenda for a regular meeting. And I'll go ahead and call on the first person who raised a hand, which is Preston Addison. Irene? Thank you. Preston, do you have the floor? There we go.
Okay, there you go, Preston, sorry.
Okay, I have a quick, just a procedural question first. I'm commenting, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Doesn't look like my camera's working, but it is on. I'm commenting on consent calendar item four and new business item eight. Is this the place, time to do both of those?
I would say so.
And if I may, actually, Vice Mayor, the item four has actually been pulled from the consent calendar. So there will be separate public comments for that item four. Also, item eight will also have its own public comment period. This is the time only for items that are not on the agenda.
Okay, yeah, it didn't, it didn't say it was for items not on the agenda, so I wasn't sure. So I will yield the floor and bring up my comments for item four and eight at the appropriate time.
Thank you. Renee, please? Renee, are you ready?
Yes, yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I believe this is the appropriate time to speak. My name is Renee Rowe. I'm a resident of downtown Cloverdale. I attended my first meeting on the topic of transience and crime back in September 2018. And I continue to be concerned on the topics of increasing crime, safety, fire risk, and pollution on the river, and the impact to both citizens and businesses. So with the new leadership, I'd like to suggest we establish a separate subcommittee to address transience and crime, so the Community Action Group on Homelessness can focus on services and the crime issue can be addressed with the new leadership, citizens, and law enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you, Irene. Is the clock running?
Sorry, Vice Mayor, I was a little slow. Back to the new year, normal.
Okay, well, thank you, Renee. Next person who has a hand up is Christina Leped Duarte.
Good, good evening, Council. Good evening, councilmembers and community members and everybody attending the meeting. I wanted to speak on behalf today, not only on my, on behalf of myself, but on behalf of many community members, constituents of the council, and also community members that, not only the ones that voted, but the ones that reside here that, that aren't able to vote. And the reason why I come forth is I'm a person that wants to help Cloverdale. I want to see us grow. I want to see us focus on some positive things. I want to see us thrive and truly encourage one another and show some respect. And so I speak tonight because I am concerned and I am actually very saddened on the conduct, the conduct of one of our newly appointed council members. Some statements, very, very disturbing statements that were made on a personal Facebook page, but for our community to see. And so it takes a lot of courage for me to come up here and speak up. And it's not only that, but this is something that's disheartening because I put my trust, my personal trust in this council member. I even voted for this person. And so I want to bring it to the board, not as a way to shame, but as a way to start setting new standards of how we should be treating our community members, our constituents, our people that fit, that also visit our, our community page that may not live here in Cloverdale. Because not only that, we deserve better. We demand better as well. And we are better than that. Cloverdale is truly better than that. And the leadership that I know that I want to endorse is, is a leadership that's going to be inclusive, that we're going to work together, that we may have differences, but truly at the end of the day, instead of us reacting, we're going to take a step back and we're going to say, hey, listen, you know, there's some things that bother us, but we're going to truly listen about what we say out loud on our words. But not only that, a leader is a person not just by title, not because they got a lot of votes, but a person of action. And so I also want to, so that's something that I really, really want to talk about, but I want to save the last couple of seconds to really ask the city council to please consider including closed captions like our school district does, because it allows for more participants to be involved. Because we all know that the best investment that we can truly make in our community is involvement and inclusiveness. So please truly consider this. Let me know how I can help make that happen. But this is something that I'd truly like to do. And once again, my name is Christina Leped Duarte and I look forward to working with the council members and our committees here in Cloverdale. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Duarte. Anybody else wants to make a public comment? I don't see any hands raised.
Correct, Vice Mayor, no other hands are raised at this time.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and go with the student liaison report.
Hi, Summer. Sorry, Vice Mayor, one hand did pop up by.
Oh, okay, all right. Ms. Cordova, please? Talking's permitted, go ahead. Ms. Cordova, your microphone is on mute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, thank you.
So I would like to know where the city council sits as far as a council member who utilizes their Facebook to discuss items that pertain to the community and what have you. I understand that there was no violation of a Brown Act and that the council members are able to engage with the community regarding discussion that will not be agendized or is not currently agendized. So I guess what I'm looking for is to see what the city council's position is as far as that goes.
Is your comment complete, Angela?
Well, I guess what I'm saying is I don't, I don't really understand what the scrutiny is if somebody has their own personal views or discussion regarding anything, as long as it is outside the scope of their current council position. So.
I'm sorry, Ms. Cordova, but we cannot discuss any items of, that are not on the agenda for the night.
No, that's fine, and I respect that and I appreciate that, Vice Mayor. I, I just wanted to make a statement that I really don't understand what the issue is if somebody is, is speaking in relation to something, again, that has nothing to do with their current position. So that, that was pretty much all I wanted to say about it.
Thank you very much, and I welcome you to send written documentation to any of us.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I welcome you to send any message to any of us in council. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that.
Vice Mayor Chair Cruz, if I can, just make a really brief comment. I, I just want to share with council that there, there was some new legislation. It's A B 992 that does provide some guidance on social media posts. That, for reference, was discussed briefly by our city attorney, I think, at the last meeting in December, but that's a good reference law for, for posting relative to social media. In the comment, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. And we have El Fabian on the line. Please go ahead, Ms. Fabian.
Hi, hi, this is Leon Fabian. I, I'm a little perplexed because I did see the post that Christina is mentioning on the community page and I felt that the council member that she was speaking about, he, it was, you know, it was not a council, but it was a different subject, but it was done with respect and with the, with the spirit of opening up discussion and to, you know, and it, I mean, there was a lot, I didn't personally see anything disrespectful, but what he put whatsoever, not one word. I think I did see in some of the dialogue and in the letter that was written to council to this, the same dialogue, the same narrative over and over and over again, which just kind of struck me as like, okay, you know, the, the point, his point of view was just being shot down by the same, the same words, the same dialogues, the same narrative. And it was frustrating for me to watch because the original post that he put was just to open up the discussion within the community about this one specific thing that wasn't have anything to do with his school, you know, his council position. So I'm just, I, I didn't see it. I don't feel that that was the spirit at all that he was trying to convey. And, you know, I'm sorry that, I mean, I, you know, everybody's got their own perspective and their own feelings because of their involvement, and that's, that's what I got out of it, not him. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fabian. And I see another hand by Kyla Jean Ortiz. You can go ahead, Kyla, unmute yourself, please. Kyla, you need to unmute yourself, please.
Kyla Jean Ortiz, you have been unmuted and can't speak.
It shows her, it shows her muted. Ms. Ortiz, are you going to participate in open comment? What is the procedure on this when the person doesn't talk? Just move on?
Oh, there we go.
Okay, go ahead.
Looks like we lost her. So at your recommendation, Vice Mayor, we can allow her to speak when I see her raised or her hand raised again at an appropriate time.
That sounds good. Thank you very much for all the comments. And now we're going to move on to student liaison report, and I'm looking forward to Summer's report. Please go ahead, Summers. And I'm sorry, we didn't call you on roll call. Here.
Hear me?
Yes, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, perfect. So in the past two weeks, we have been implementing a new schedule that we're going to use for the rest of the spring semester, which is basically what our district wanted to explain to you guys. So it's called a three by three schedule and what we have is our first three periods for the first half of the semester and our last three periods for the second half of the semester. And they put this into place and hope that we can go into a hybrid later this year. And also they would like to report that there's a possibility of us going back to school and they do have high hopes because it is very detrimental on the kids as we've seen so far. And also all sports and student activities have been postponed and or canceled as of right now due to the rising cases. However, our school does wish to get everything back to normal as soon as possible because it is not going over well with the students. So that is about it for right now, but thank you guys.
I want to go ahead and ask, since you are in the student government, could you give us some background on what's going on with the group?
Um, as of right now, we are trying to do little things like student announcements and just things to get the students, especially freshmen or sophomores who haven't been at this like school for very long, obviously. However, it's really hard to reach out to a lot of students, especially because they don't want to be spending any extra time on the computer than they have to. So for things like prom or dances or rallies that we'd normally be having, there's not really anything we can do in place of them. So as a student government, it's a little bit frustrating, but the service dances and there's hope that these are indifferent things that are safe for everybody.
Thank you very much, Summers. Any questions for Summer from any of the council members? Well, thank you very much for your participation. And now I would need for a motion for the consent calendar.
Madam Mayor, I'll move for approval as submitted with the exception of item number four, which has been pulled.
Second.
Madam Mayor, I would like to pull number five if you don't mind. I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't jump in fast enough.
Number five. Okay. Make note of that. So we will be voting on consent calendar except for item four and five, which have been pulled.
Madam Mayor, I changed my motion to include item number five.
Thank you. Okay. Irene?
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Lance?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
And through the, through the Vice Mayor, if I may make a recommendation, could we just go ahead and do item five first before she recuses herself from item four?
Okay.
Trying to keep you here as long as we can, Marta.
Thank you.
I, I promise I'll be fast. It's just a couple of very simple questions for Mr. Kelly. I just want, I'm kind of curious if you could just explain it a little bit more for me as to like where they're testing and then what the results of that agreement would come out with their results, what it, what it would mean for any developments and how that is.
Councilmember Lance, I'm, I'm happy to respond to your, to your question and then I, I want to ensure that our, our city engineer, Mark Rincon, has an opportunity to respond as well. The city is currently engaged in a planning effort to update our master plan for the southwest planning area within the city. One of the critical areas that we need to evaluate is our sewer capacity, you know, within the system itself. And the flow monitoring is a critical aspect to not just relying on hydraulic models for flow monitoring, but to actually, you know, look at what the, the flow of, you know, wastewater is within, within our, our system. But for additional details, I'll, I'll ask Mark Rincon to provide some, some additional details about the monitoring services that are being recommended.
Yeah, happy to provide more input. Good evening, Vice Mayor, council members. So this item, we have five locations, basically five manholes in the collection system at strategic points where they're pretty, pretty much junctions where we can measure flow. And it's not just sewer flow too, but as you know, as any sewer system, they're, they're not tight. So often we get inflow from, from wet weather. And so we're trying to do this in the wintertime to see, not only can this sewer support development, but also support, you know, what is anticipated to be an I and I flow. So that's typical, you know, we try to avoid it. We, we try to keep the sewer repaired so it's tight as possible. So we're doing five locations. We try to do it in the wintertime to catch this other component and see if the sewer has been, is near surcharge. If it's getting too close to surcharge, then there are certain improvements, certain lengths that need to be upsized or, or, or paralleled. So that's, that's the whole point is capturing this information, feeding it back to the, to the other consultant who's doing the, the engineering analysis of the system.
Thank you both for the information. I appreciate it. And with that, I'd make a motion for number five.
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Lance?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Thank you.
And I need to recuse myself on discussion on item four.
Councilmembers, if I, if I can interject here with the mayor absent and the Vice Mayor recruit, recusal, it is, I recommended that the council appoint a chair to cover this item in, in their absence. A vote is needed. It's just a general agreement who will chair this item.
I'm going to recommend Councilmember Bagby chair this item.
All right, it looks like, Todd, you're nodding. All right. I, I drew the second, the, the short straw for the second time tonight. Okay. So we'll move on to item four and resolution approving an exclusive negotiating agreement with Integrated Community Development for Design and Development of an Affordable Housing Project on parcel A of Times Square project. And I believe we have additional information from staff.
And Kevin, before you start, I'm sorry to interrupt. And Irene, I know that the Vice Mayor did indicate she had a conflict with the item. Can the record just show that she has a conflict because she does live within 1,000 feet of the, of the area?
Commission members, before I begin, I'd like to point out a clarification in the staff report. It reads that in exchange, that the the right to develop Times Square would be accomplished. And that was the direction on the 26th of August. That wasn't the, the direction was to bring back this exclusive negotiating agreement. And I think that in the staff report went too far to say the right to develop is more about bring back an exclusive negotiating agreement and let's work through a development proposal. So I just want to clarify that for the record.
So do we need to amend the resolution in any way? Because I, I didn't, I didn't read it that closely. You don't think so?
No, I don't think there's, there's anything in there that's that definitive.
Okay.
So with that, I'd just like to, this, this, this item is a consideration of an exclusive negotiating agreement between the city and Integrated Community Development. This would be for a possible affordable housing project on lot A of Times Square. Just a little background, we did talk about it on the 26th and where the council, and this is kind of what I'm alluding to in the staff report, the council directed us to bring back an exclusive negotiating agreement so that we can, again, start the discussion about a possible development. This really is considered the first step. If approved tonight, it will allow the city Uh, if approved tonight, it will allow the city and Integrated Community Development to start talking about the site, talking about what what development could go there, affordable housing. Uh, ultimately, we will be working towards a development agreement, uh, which will have a much more specificity in it, including things like the number of units, the level of affordability, low, very low, those types of things, uh, how the project looks and other other items, but it's more specific. The point is this exclusive negotiating agreement is the first step and it does not obligate the city to grant any approval or authorize anything for um, community integrated development. It does obligate us though to not negotiate with other developers. Um, and it does obligate us to put a good faith effort in negotiating with community development, uh, Integrated Community Development, excuse me, and we have six months to do so. It may be able to be extended. I'm not sure, but uh, I think six months would be enough. And this agreement is really similar to the one we used on the Cherry Creek project with ultimately turned into a development agreement and a lease agreement and affordable housing agreement um, and several other agreements. So um, just so you know, the developer would be required to submit a full planning application that includes a site plan, elevations and all the requirements of that. And we would be taking the project uh, to the Planning Commission where we'd be seeking a recommendation of approval, but the project would ultimately be approved by the city council along with all the other agreements, whichever agreements we end up having on this. Um, so that's the end of my report. Uh, I don't know if you have any questions, please let me know.
If I could jump in, um, just to add, just and again, just pointing what what uh, what Kevin mentioned already, your Community Development Director uh, pointed out, this agreement does not provide a right to actually start any type of construction. This is not for any type of development that's already planned. All this says is we will negotiate exclusively with this this entity in order for a possible uh, development at that location. Um, very important, any development, the the actual agreement itself does have timelines where it is for 180 days, as Kevin mentioned, there's an ability to extend uh, for an additional time. Uh, I believe it's 90 days, but it's only if with uh, with approval of the city. Um, the agreement has certain deadlines where the developer has to come back and and provide certain uh, development plans. At that point, we would continue to negotiate um, to potentially hopefully get something again to the city, to the Planning Commission for Recommendation, for the council for Approval. Again, this is just, it starts the negotiation process of a potential project.
Thank you. I know we did discuss this uh, in closed session, so I'm not, are there any additional questions from council members right now? And if there aren't, we'll just go ahead and and open it up for public comment.
Madam, um, Madam Chair, I'm I'm fine with it. Um, I ju- I just really think it's important that the public understand that this is nothing more than an exclusive uh, contract to negotiate only with this developer. Has nothing to do with what's going to go on the on that parcel, or if anything is going to go on it at all. So um, that concludes my comments, questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Lance, did you have anything at this time or do you want to wait till we deliberate after public comment?
Uh, let's go through public comment. Thank you.
Okay. All right. With that, we'll go ahead and open up to public comment. Irene, um, you want to start us off?
Our first speaker is Preston.
Good evening, council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, just uh, want to get into the process early as we've talked about in the past and put our thoughts out there for you. Um, absolutely supportive of development, both personally and for the schools and for the community. Um, but would hope that we would consider the needs of the children that will be coming to our community with these new developments. Um, smart community development takes into account the educational needs of our kids. And uh, in particular, these uh, affordable housing units bring the most vulnerable students socio-economically to our community. So they are even more deserving of having their educational needs looked out for because they don't necessarily have the resources that other students do. Many communities that um, profess smart development make sure that developers take those needs into account when they're bringing new homes to a community. We've spent hours and hours as a board looking for funding mechanisms to build classrooms for our schools. That was mostly triggered by the development by the same developer at the south end of town, which is going to bring 300 plus homes and enough children to actually build another school. Uh, after years of research, we've found that there is no funding mechanism from the state to take care of these students' facility needs. It only can come from our uh, city government by requiring that that is taken care of. People will say, oh, you have developer fees. The developer fees for those 300 plus homes will purchase a one-hole bathroom. That's the way public works pros- uh, projects go and that's how much they cost. And um, you know, you you're looking at needing seats for 300 plus students and all you get out of the developer fees are one toilet. Uh, these should be considered just like you consider your water and sewer connections. They're essential services and you wouldn't let somebody build a home without paying the cost to connect them to the services that they need and that these kids need. Uh, so please consider that as you're developing your agreements, especially with large developers that are bringing kids to our community, which we hope to welcome with open arms, but we hope those can be inside and out of the rain. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. We have the next speaker, Irene.
Next, we have Superintendent Betha McLean.
Good evening, everybody. Hi again. Um, I just want to echo some of what Preston said and also, you know, we 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 spoke before closed session, but I know that this is very preliminary and it's a discussion of a contract. Um, but I think that as you enter into a contract, really thinking about how the the relationship between the city and the developer focuses on the best interests of the whole community, making sure that that developer is thinking it's adjacent, this property is adjacent to a school. Um, how the design of that uh, development, how the um, public spaces within that development, um, as well as um, the investment in the schools of the developer um, will impact their ability to occupy the units, um, the stability of the people who occupy the units, um, that all of these things are interconnected and that the schools are really at the heart of any well-planned community. So, you know, it it's just an urgent issue that along through the process of discussing how that property will be used, that the schools are a focal component of the conversation. Um, we don't want to miss an opportunity to really stress the importance of this and the potential impact of high-density development, housing development, um, so close to a school um, and that it will impact us and that we want to be equipped to serve the students who come with the development in the best way possible and to really enhance the community and the perspective of potential residents of the community by making sure our schools are able to serve the students well, both in facilities and in other ways. Um, and we want to partner with the city to make sure that we can do that. So really just want to emphasize the importance of that lens as you move forward. And that is um, all the time I'll take. Thank you for uh, allowing me to speak.
Great, thank you. Irene, do we have anyone else?
No other hands are raised here.
Great, thank you. Well, I'll bring it back to the council um, for deliberation. Uh, who would like to go first?
I'll go first because I have nothing to deliberate. Thank you.
Certainly. Councilmember Lance, did you have anything? Did you have anything further?
Yeah, and it'll be quick. I I just with the closed session, I appreciated it when everyone had to stay. And I just wanted to make sure that the information that I requested will come forward with this regarding our current percentage of low, medium and high-income homes that we currently have in Cloverdale and that we uh, move forward to that future agenda item you suggested, Melanie, regarding the workshop for not only just the community, but school to start working better with you to get on the same page and and work together on.
Right. Well, yeah, I I off topic and off the agenda, you're going to love our budget sessions. I'm looking forward to having you there. So um, with that, on on this item, there isn't going, not a lot of deliberation. Um, uh, Councilmember Walter is has, I think, spoken his piece in closed session and but just to to summarize what my thoughts were on this item is that this is really um, a very preliminary um, uh, agreement to to codify what the the basically the handshake agreement we had with the developer at an earlier meeting to go ahead and enter it into an exclusive agreement. It's um, basically putting it in contract form and keeping our word. So I always think that that's important. So I'm looking forward to uh, to supporting this item. Uh, but I'll go ahead and call for a roll call, Irene, if you're ready.
Councilmember Lance.
And I think the city attorney has something.
Did we get, and I'm sorry, I missed it. Did we get a motion?
Actually, sorry, it's been, I'm a little rusty. It's been a while. So I do need um, a a motion. Is there a motion from the from um, the council members?
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
And is there a second?
And I'll, I'll second it.
With that, thank you very much for reminding me how to do this. It's been a while. Uh, we'll go ahead and take the roll call vote, Irene.
Thank you. Councilmember Lance.
Aye.
Councilmember Walter.
Aye.
And Councilmember Bagby.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we need to invite Vice Mayor uh, Cruz back into the meeting.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Bagby. Now we are going to um, mention that communications um, will be um, discussed at a further, further with uh, when the mayor is here, I have to also recuse myself from some of the uh, communication that came in. Um, and city manager will bring it back to council with appropriate action as required. Is that okay? David and Attorney Sanchez.
And Vice Mayor, that that definitely works. And I think that you were mentioning there was some correspondence regarding uh, some improvements or whatnot that were located close to your residence. Um, staff will be looking at the correspondence to seeing what needs to come back to council for any type of discussion or any type of further direction from the from the council. And we could definitely do that at a at a future meeting.
I live in a complicated place. Okay, let's move on. And yes.
If I can, I just, I do want to note the the communication that was included is correspondence from Al Myers, uh, is Board President of the Cloverdale Senior Center and it's certainly uh, council's decision if they want to uh, take that up as a discussion item at the next council meeting. Um, but I just wanted to to note that this particular correspondence is making a request for the city council to prioritize food distribution and establish a food task force. Uh, I understand from Mr. Myers that he's going to modify that particular request and um, it's not going to reflect a request to establish a food task force, but but really to uh, make sure that this continues to be a priority for the city, uh, given the significant foods insecurity related to uh, the the COVID pandemic on and that we are actively addressing during the uh, uh, is part of the city's response and is part of our resilient Cloverdale initiative. So I just wanted to point that correspondence out that it is is on your agenda packet. And I think Mr. Al Myers would at some point like to uh, address the council on on his communication.
Perhaps it's something that if wants to have further discussion, we could do under the pandemic headline.
Absolutely. I'd be happy to.
That is agendized.
Absolutely.
Okay. So we'll move on uh, to new business. And um, this is the discussion and direction on draft city council, subcommittee, joint committee and regional board committee appointments. Since the mayor is not uh, present and he has something to say about this and he will also be participating of some of this subcommittees, I suggest that we go ahead and address perhaps the regional board committee appointments because these are going to be uh, in session beginning this week and early next week. I don't think we have any conflicts or any disagreements on those appointments. However, the uh, local subcommittees and joint committees should be discussed when uh, Mayor Turner is present. Counsel?
Well, does Madam uh, Vice Mayor, uh, if I may please?
Yes.
Is that, does that work into the appropriate timelines, um, David, that we need or do we need to um, at least um, have some type of a committee ready on the subcommittee local?
Great, great question, uh, Councilmember Walter. And uh, it it certainly councils direction uh, or decision whether to uh, move the formal appointments to of subcommittees to your next meeting. You know, my my recommendation is is to have for, you know, the item tonight is really just to have further conversation about the appointments in order to facilitate city staff bringing back a resolution at your next meeting that would uh, formalize the subcommittee appointments and also set the meeting dates and times for the subcommittees to ensure compliance with the with the Brown Act. Uh, in the absence of that, the subcommittees will continue with their existing membership, but of course, one of the members is a former council member, so uh, would no longer be a a member of the subcommittees. My my thought and recommendation for council would be to to see if there is consensus on some of the subcommittee appointments uh, so that we could at least bring back a draft resolution of for consideration by the council at your next meeting, which would then uh, and we could put it on a regular calendar. Council at that meeting then could uh, make their final decisions and have any final deliberations relative to their, to to your recommendations for the subcommittee appointments. And 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 that way, the the resolution is 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 kind of um, you know, positioned and ready to 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 adopt at your next meeting. So we, so we as staff and and the subcommittees can be, you know, off and running with respect to the the subcommittee uh, makeup and the meeting times and dates of those those subcommittees. Um, but but I guess I understand if you if you want to hold off on that discussion, uh, it it will, it will likely delay final adoption until uh, the, you know, either March or it would be necessary to schedule a special meeting.
So you're saying, uh, just a second. Uh, so you're saying to go ahead and discuss participation in subcommittees, but uh, establish that the the dates and times once the mayor is able to uh, have input in that because we want to make sure that he can participate based on his schedule also.
That that's correct and.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, uh, Councilmember Walter, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say I'd like to uh, make that uh, uh, recommendation that that David just said, let's go ahead and uh, hash it out so that when it does come back, if the mayor is fine with it, we just have to uh, pass the resolution. So.
And and Vice Mayor, members of council, i- i- if if it's okay, I can certainly uh, provide an overview of the, you know, provide an agenda report for this item. And uh, you you then council can can deliberate from there, but it's but it's it's really council's choice on how you'd like 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 to proceed.
I I am inclined to just do regional today.
Well, actually, I'm just looking at the, if I if I may, Madam, Madam. Well, actually, I'm just looking at the if I if I may, Madam Vice Mayor, I'm looking at the assignments and I I don't see that there would be, there probably isn't going to be a big conflict for the mayor. So I'd be happy to tentatively move forward with this schedule. Just roughly knowing his source, being roughly familiar with his work schedule, I think I and if not, we can always, we can change the times.
I agree with that.
Okay, so let's go ahead and discuss it because I I have sent a communication to David regarding my choice of subcommittees. And one of the things that I have observed is that in in these two years is that it's very beneficial to rotate participation in subcommittees to really get an understanding of the true functioning and obligations of the city. I have been and, you know, I have been rotating myself except for the school city subcommittee where I have been there for two years. And I think I should rotate to another committee, subcommittee at this point. Just like I had also said that I wanted to go ahead and be in the open space committee, and I decided against that some time ago. So and that's in the regional aspect. So that's I I do have some change of mind, some change of heart regarding the subcommittees for for about a couple of weeks now. So Melanie or Gus?
I guess I just said, do you want me to comment on the recommendations for for my subcommittees right this point?
Well, I think we should all give David an idea of where it is that we want to be.
Okay.
And if we're gonna go with that recommendation or not.
Yeah, I'm okay. I'm prepared to do that. I just wasn't clear what what you're expecting me. So yeah, I'll go next. So according to the table, it looks like he's recommending that it be on Finance Administration and Police. It would be the mayor and me. And then on Planning and Sustainability, it would be Councilmember Walter and me. And I'd say I I'm happy with those assignments and I think that they are synergistic with what I've been doing. I am interested in staying on Finance Administration and Police for for several reasons, but one in particular, that is one of the subcommittees where you really do need to have some consistency and what the the mayor, then Mayor Walter and Vice Mayor Walter was able to provide that on that subcommittee and get me up to speed because it is one of the more complex and one of the longest subcommittee meetings that we we have. But I'm interested in staying on it this year for a particular reason, and that is is that one of our, one of our our key goals was to bringing City Hall up to speed where technology is concerned and COVID-19 has only accelerated that need. And so I have found that on that committee where administration is concerned, just because of my 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 career, my technology background, I'm able to, you know, give additional advice or additional perspective, you know, sometimes speak the language of the consultants who are coming or the the companies that are coming in to pitch their services. And I think that that's going to continue for the next year. And so it's something that I think that I can I bring real value on. I think that Mayor Turner also brings a lot of value where his, from his professional background at Kaiser in HR, he has a wonderful perspective on so many of, just like Councilmember Walter's professional background, he may, he he brought so much of his business acumen and ability with numbers to to that subcommittee. So I think it's a a really good teaming and a and a very good choice, just especially for this year. So I am interested in in continuing and doing that. And I'm actually kind of looking forward to getting on back involved in planning sustainability, kind of getting back to my my planning commission roots. But I think that with what I'm working on at Sinoma Clean Power and potentially Sinoma County Transportation Authority and Regional Climate Protection Authority, I think I can bring a lot of value to that subcommittee this year. So I'm 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 very happy. I I think I can. I can do a lot of good work there and bring the the regional boards that'll probably be continuing on bringing that information back to the subcommittee as well.
And and if I may, Madam Mayor, if I can just go ahead and and give you my thoughts on the subcommittees, you know, I I'm pleased with all of them that I have. Planning and Sustainability, I'm excited to to be back on Public Works again. It's been a few years. I I think Finance and the Police, I think it's really important that we do have some consistency there and Councilmember Bagby will bring that. As much as I hate to give that up, I I think quite frankly that the position of mayor should always be represented on that committee because that's probably the most important one. That's not that, not that the position of mayor doesn't keep their eye on everything, but you know, when you're sitting in a meeting for a couple of hours hearing it, you know, you kind of know what's going on. And I think that's really important for the mayor to to have that ability. So I I'm happy with the selections. If you, Vice Mayor, are not interested in the school subcommittee, I I'll take that over for you if you'd like. I was on that a few years ago. So I I'm here to serve, but I like the I like the picks that I have already. So thank you.
Yes, I definitely want to rotate and I would like to be in sustainability, given that I am in zero waste and I'm going to continue to be in zero waste and that I'll probably be the representative in the Russian River Water Association. Countywide also and the background with the water education within the last couple, the last year and a half. So that's something that I would like to negotiate and I would like to hear from Todd.
It's turning into a monopoly game pretty quick here.
I like my appointments. I don't have anything else to say. I'm sorry. I don't have any a long dissertation.
So who is in in sustainability? Is that Gus and Melanie? Or is it Todd and Melanie?
But Vice Mayor, if I can, I'll just recap what I've heard council say has preference thus far. I've heard an indication for Finance Admin and Police from there's there's definitely a preference by Councilmember Bagby and then and their support by council for for Mayor Turner on Planning and Sustainability. I've heard a support from Councilmember Walter, Councilmember Bagby and Vice Mayor Cruz. But I've also heard that Councilmember Cruz would support, I mean, excuse me, Councilmember Walter would support sitting on the Joint City School Subcommittee in lieu of the Planning and Sustainability Subcommittee. I've heard Councilmember Walter indicate his preference for Public Works and heard a preference by Councilmember Lands to sit on the Joint City Fire District Subcommittee as well as the Joint City School Subcommittee. So if if Councilmember Walter was amenable to sitting on the school Subcommittee in lieu of Planning and Sustainability, I think the only other position that would remain open right at this point would be Public Works. There would be one opening there and that might be an appropriate location for Mayor Turner as as a tentative recommendation.
So that Public Works would be Mayor Turner and myself?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, I I'm fine with that. And and if Mayor Turner wanted to continue on the school board, I'm fine with that, too. But for tonight, if you want to put me on the school board, I'm fine with that if if Vice Mayor Cruz agrees with that.
That's fine with me. I want to be as around as possible for when my turn comes.
My staff's other recommendation for your your appointments would be that the council members divide up the workload. Of course, I think we it's shown here that each council member would serve on two subcommittees, so that helps. Also, it would be recommended that each council member serve as the chair for one of the subcommittees that they serve on and and, you know, the chair also bears the brunt of the workload of agenda setting and also managing the meeting. And that would be a way of kind of helping manage the 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 process and the workflow for each of the subcommittees by designating who the chair would be for those subcommittees.
Well, I'm the current chair for Finance Admin, so I'm happy to give that to the mayor.
And I wouldn't mind Melanie being the chair for sustainability.
I can't get out of it. Okay.
You can't get out of it.
Okay.
Well, see, this is what's happening. I may have to preside the zero waste for the county this year. So I want to make sure that I have plenty of time because if I have to do zero waste.
That's a huge job. Yeah, I I I offloaded that. For those who don't know, I offloaded that to Marta a couple of years ago. That's a huge job.
If if I don't have to preside it this year, I will have more time. And I would have to preside it next year because it will be Cloverdale's turn.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you.
You is that clear as mud, David?
I've got it. So we've got Mayor Turner as the chair for Finance Admin.
He didn't show up for the meeting.
The other member, Councilmember Bagby for Planning and Sustainability. You've got Councilmember Bagby as the chair with the Subcommittee Member Vice Vice Mayor Cruz. For Public Works, I've got Councilmember Walter as the chair and Mayor Turner is is the second committee member. Now we have joint city, the two joint city subcommittees. What I have identified is Vice Mayor Cruz, you would be the the chair for that Subcommittee followed by your fellow Councilmember Lands. And on the Joint City School Subcommittee, Councilmember Lands would chair the chair that the committee and be joined by Councilmember Walter.
Works for me.
Okay.
Thank you, David.
Okay, so we need to move then to the regional committees.
And Vice Mayor, if I can, I staff did our best to indicate the regional board appointments and preferences by each of the council members by showing their interest. There there are a few regional boards or regional committees where multiple council members have indicated their preference. Generally, in terms of the regional boards, it's pretty set for the most part. Most council members have indicated that their their preference and it really comes down to designating the the primary and the alternate. And I think because many council members haven't indicated a a a preference for sitting on those regional boards, generally, the recommendations stand as set forth in the agenda report. One consideration, I think, is in terms of zero waste Sonoma. I know Mayor Turner indicated an interest, but that may that may have a work conflict given the long meetings. And so that there's maybe something that the council may want to discuss is the the alternate for for zero waste.
In terms of alternate, we actually changed last year for Councilmember Bagby to be the alternate because of the time requirement. I don't know if she would continue to be interested or perhaps Councilmember Walter or Councilmember Lands.
I'm sorry, I couldn't catch that. Which board is that?
Zero Waste.
Zero Waste. Okay, sorry.
What happens is zero waste, the meetings tend to be three to four hours long. And it's a big time commitment.
And there's a lot of historical.
And there's a lot of study to do. So, you know, whomever's willing to do that, it's fine with me to be an alternate. And but we need to hit the ground running when it comes to to that particular group.
If I hear you correctly, Vice Mayor, you're you're looking for an alternate to the zero waste?
Yes.
Okay, if you need me there, you can go ahead and plug me in there. I'm fine with it.
Okay. Is that agreeable to Todd and Melanie? Okay, I see their heads nodding yes.
Wait, Todd's vowing to care for that. No.
Okay, he will down the road.
I do. I do see one one issue on, I'm sorry, are are we done with that one? Because I do see an issue with the the Air District.
Yeah, we're done with that.
Okay, with with zero waste. Okay. So thank you, staff, for taking initiative on this. But I have to kind of go back to reality on the on the air pollution control control district. Those meetings are always in the middle of the day and in the middle of the week. I don't. Did you ask the mayor if he was in, did he say he was interested in this board?
Councilmember Bagby, yes, affirmed to him. I I did speak with the mayor about the role of sitting on the board for the Air District and he did that he was he was interested in in that board position.
Okay, okay. All right, that's so I'm I'm just surprised. It just it's it seems a little out of character. It's too bad he's not here, but and and if he's really interested in it, I I, you know, I I certainly have enough of the load. It's it's very synergistic synergistic with what I do at Sinoma Clean Power. But if he's if he's really interested in that board, I'm I'm happy. That that's no problem.
Right.
I'm just surprised.
And just a reminder that, you know, this 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 item on the agenda is really just for discussion and direction. So we will, we will, staff will bring this back and and with a formal resolution for the council's consideration. So we anticipate there might be some additional deliberation and and discussion about, you know, the final appointments. If, you know, if 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 council has other opinions.
If he if he can reconsideres that, I'm I'm happy to do that with Marta and or me in in either position. But yeah, it does work really well. We we do so many of the programs and so many initiatives in partnership with Sinoma Clean Power. That's why I I do I do like to do that board. But yeah, if the mayor is really interested in it, then I I don't want to stand in his way either. So that's my feedback. And then on everything else, I'm 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 fairly happy. So.
And so then we will have to go to Russian River. They kind of welcome me already without me even knowing that I was going to to be requesting this in the December meeting.
Oh, I told I told them because because we were having to continue some items from the last meeting. I said, I just am anticipating that. I I know that this was something that you were interested in. So and I'm the outgoing chair, so I'm happy to more than happy to step off of that and then be the alternate, of course, because I'll I have all of the history as well. So I'm happy, happy to do that.
Okay, so you got it, David.
Okay, so just to be be clear, item or excuse me, page 74 of your packet or page four for the regional boards appointments provides the recommendations for the regional boards. It sounds like there's general concurrence for the recommendations for all of those appointments. And if there is, we we can bring it forward as as proposed.
I do see one potential problem. Sorry, sorry, we're all just inches from a clean getaway on the. On the Sonoma County Department of Health Services and Health Action Council, I'm listed as alternate. Is that still, is it under the auspices of the senior center? And I'll say why, and so I need Jose's input, is I am under contract with the senior center. And so when we're we're going to talk about an item for later on tonight or at another time regarding funding for the senior center, I will have to recuse myself from that item. So I would want to hear from you as to whether or not I should even be an alternate on this.
Well, the health action, there's a difference. There's the local health action, which is Cloverdale under Senior Center. And then there's the county health action that I have been representing the council on pretty much since the beginning. And those are once a month meetings.
But I just have a concern, though, is that if the health action that council that I would be serving on receives any city money, then I likely can't sit on that at all.
It's independent, isn't it, David? Because I don't think that the health action funding.
If they receive, yeah, if they, if they receive funding, or if the senior center receives funding on their behalf or anything like that, I would assume it's a potential conflict.
Okay, David, clarify that one.
And I'm sorry, just maybe, maybe we could go ahead. And if even if it stays as is, maybe we could look into that from now till the next meeting.
And that's fine.
If it's an issue, we'll raise it.
That's fine. It's just, yeah, if there's any instance where they receive money directly from the city or they're it's a budget consideration, then I need to recuse myself. If to the senior center for that, yeah, for that board. Okay. I'm fine. Yeah, I guess we can finalize it at a later date. That would be great. Oh, Marta, you're muted.
Yeah, I have a question. So we're done with that, right? I have a question regarding the countywide competition for SMART and, which is the other one? A-Bag, SMART, A-Bag, and the Open Space. Are we going to support any of the candidates as a council? Or are we going to do that individually?
Madam Vice Mayor, if I may, please.
Yes.
Were we done with the regional board appointments? Because it might be beneficial to have David verbiage it back to us so that we receive it correctly at the next meeting. Just a suggestion.
Well, it's just that this is also regional, but let's go ahead with the ones that we have control on and summarize those, David, and then we'll go to the other ones.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor, members of council, so the recommended appointments are as follows. Finance, Admin, and Police. I have Mayor Turner serving as the chair with Councilmember Bagby for Planning and Sustainability. I have Councilmember Bagby serving as the chair with Councilmember Cruz. For Public Works, I have Councilmember Walter serving as the chair with Mayor Turner. For Joint City Fire District, I have Vice Mayor Cruz serving with Councilmember Lands. With the Joint City School District, I have Councilmember Lands, a chair, serving as the chair with Councilmember Walter. For the regional board appointments, I have the Cloverdale Chamber of Commerce liaison as Councilmember Lands and Councilmember Walter. For the Cloverdale Senior Center, I have Vice Mayor Cruz with Councilmember Lands as the alternate. For Planning Commission liaison, I have Councilmember Walter with Mayor Turner. With the Cloverdale Rancheria Tribal Council liaison, I have Vice Mayor Cruz with Councilmember Walter as the alternate. For the Cloverdale Regional Library Advisory Board, I have Mayor Turner with Vice Mayor Cruz as the alternate. For the League of California Cities Board of Directors, which is an appointment, an outside appointment by the Board of the League of Cities, is Councilmember Bagby. For the League of California Cities, Baywood Empire Division Legislative Committee, I have Councilmember Bagby and Councilmember Cruz. For the Northern Sonoma County Air Pollution Control District, I have Mayor Turner with Councilmember, or excuse me, Vice Mayor Cruz serving as the alternate. For the REMIT Board, it's our Finance Director, Susie Holmes, and myself as the alternate. For the Russian River Water Association, I have Vice Mayor Cruz with Councilmember Bagby as the alternate. Likewise, with the Sonoma County Department of Health Services. For the Sonoma County Mayors, I have Councilmember Bagby serving as the chair with the Mayor Turner as the alternate. We do have a recommendation for the Sonoma County Open Space District Advisory Board as Vice Mayor Cruz. For Sonoma County Transportation Authority, it's, and the Regional Parliament Protection Authority have Councilmember Bagby with Vice Mayor Cruz as the alternate. For Zero Waste, it's Vice Mayor Cruz with Councilmember Walter as the alternate. For SMART, it's Councilmember Bagby. And then last but not least, Sonoma Clean Power. Councilmember Bagby with Vice Mayor Cruz is the alternate. And to touch on your question, Vice Mayor, the appointments to SMART as well as the Open Space Advisory Board will be brought forward to the council, very likely at your next meeting or the first meeting in March for council's recommendations. Those recommendations will ultimately be forwarded to the Mayor and Councilmembers Association, which will vote as an association on those appointments to the regional boards. I believe, I think you indicated earlier tonight that you did not submit a request to be considered for the Open Space District Advisory Board. So that that letter of interest was not submitted. But I do understand that Councilmember Bagby did submit a letter of interest, and I think maybe was the only council member in Sonoma County that submitted interest in sitting on the SMART board. And again, those all will come back along with all other of the letters of interest for those regional boards for the council to weigh in and give direction to the mayor on how to vote at the mayors and councilmembers meeting in February.
You're muted, Marta.
Yes, I'm looking for my little microphone here. So for the, I wanted to also say that one of the reasons why I'm, you know, a little bit controlled with my participation is because I'm also a commissioner in the commission of the Status of Women for the county. And we have two specific projects that are big ones, and they're long term. So I need to represent Cloverdale with respect and responsibility. One of the things I really want to do in that commission is to have some of our young ladies from Cloverdale to be in the junior commission that is going to be opening, the competition is going to be opening soon. And we have not had any kind of representation from Cloverdale in the junior commission for the Status of Women. So that is on my agenda. I really want to make sure that that happens as well as working on the Leadership Institute with Daily Acts that goes through June. And so we have plenty on our plate, and I want to make sure that I do a good job representing Cloverdale and bringing programs for Cloverdale. So, go ahead, David.
Vice Mayor, I was also going to share with you and members of council that there are some other local committees that weren't included on the worksheet. Most notably, the Community Advisory, the Homeless Community Advisory Group, as well as the District Four Homeless Group that is being led by Supervisor Gore and his performance consultant, B.J. Bischoff. Council may want to, you know, recommend who sits as the council representative on both the local or Cloverdale Community Advisor Group for homelessness as well as the District Four Homelessness Group. Typically, it's the mayor that serves on the District Four Homeless Group, but it's really at the discretion of council who you want to recommend represent the council on the issue of homelessness. So I just wanted to point that out, and we can certainly bring that back as part of the resolution for council's consideration as well.
Hint, hint, Mr. Lands.
I have been taking part in the Homeless Action Group for Cloverdale as a different hat from my past. I would love to continue it as a city council member, and if so be it, and you need it. And I know I'm the fifth one in line. I will go for the District Four if necessary.
Okay, all right. David, in terms of procedure, I think that Preston had a question about something. And I don't see what item that is. Actually, he has his hand up. So may we open this for public comment at this point?
Absolutely, Vice Mayor. The council has deliberated. Certainly, it's an opportunity for public comment.
I see that Councilmember Walter also has his hand up.
Okay, so you want to talk now, Gus, or after the public?
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, I hit the wrong button. I'm sorry.
Okay, all right. Well, Renee, please go ahead and allow Preston and Renee in. Thank you.
It sounds like it's all, you guys have made all your decisions, and that's great. I just had wanted to say, I thought it'd be very productive if Todd Lands were on the City School Subcommittee, just because he has a ton of experience with everything that we've been going. And I look forward to working with Todd and Councilmember Walter on the City School Subcommittee. I hope we can have a productive year ahead of us. And thank you guys for putting on this time, man.
Thank you, Preston.
Thank you, Marta.
Renee?
Yes, I just stepped away for a couple of seconds. I think I missed it, but I was going to suggest that someone with the law enforcement background be on the Subcommittee for Police, so we can address the issue with the crime and transience in addition to the community group. So did I just hear that Todd Lands did just volunteer to head that up at the city level as well as regional?
No, that's a clarification there. The police and admin is normally for the mayor and one seasoned council member in the area. So we're keeping Melanie and the mayor in that role. He is going to be working on the homeless initiatives.
Okay, so for crime, is it possible that we can look at a transience and crime Subcommittee as an offshoot? Since the homeless part, they're looking at services for the homeless, which is great. But also, I think we need that focus on transience and crime and how to work with law enforcement. I think it would be very helpful to have somebody that has a law enforcement background.
I think that would be under the Admin Police Committee. Would that be correct, Gus and Melanie, since both of you have been in the mayorship?
Well, Madam Chair, I think we have to remember that our police chief, Chief Ferguson, is always at those task force meetings. And you know, it's nice that Councilmember Lands is going to be there. And with all due respect, Todd, you know, I rely on our police chief for the proper guidance on those particular issues. So I think with the chief being there, that's more than enough representation. But, you know, I'm only one vote, one voice.
Yeah, I'd like to see a citizen, someone that lives in Cloverdale and is experiencing the things that the residents and businesses in Cloverdale are experiencing. And I think because he has a business and he also lives in Cloverdale, that he would have that unique perspective. And I don't know Todd at all, so Todd's probably wondering who I am, but I just, I saw that he had that background. And I think it would be very helpful for the community to have somebody that has that background, that knows how to work with law enforcement, but from the citizens as both businesses and residents, you know, perspective.
Would you like to comment on that, David? Because there is a procedure and a process within council where we follow, we follow pretty much a rotation on participation on the committees. David, could you please expand on that?
Sure. And I understand Ms. Rowe has submitted, you know, correspondence that addresses her concerns. And I responded in providing information overview of the Community Advisory Group for Homeless. It may not be completely evident, but one of the initiatives, particularly goal number two of the Strategic Plan Framework, which states, you know, to prevent and mitigate public health and safety impacts, really was intended to be kind of focused on, you know, crime related to homelessness. So that is an issue that the Strategic Plan Framework was certainly intended to address. But, you know, we're continuing to develop that. And if it's missing key components or not addressing specific concerns, you know, I think both Chief Ferguson and I would certainly like to hear what those concerns are, so that we can, you know, draft appropriate strategies and action steps that can help address with the crime issue that is of concern. But to the question, you know, there's kind of, you know, two ways to address crime and issues of homelessness. And that does include the Finance, Admin, and Police Subcommittee. Often, those types of issues are addressed within that Subcommittee, and then the appointments, you know, take up those issues. Often, we prefer that, you know, critical issues, you know, come to council first. But where appropriate, those are assigned to the Subcommittee for, you know, review and analysis and a recommendation back to council. And of course, the Community Advisory Group, as we, our mission really is to finalize a draft strategic plan that can then be brought back to council as well. And, you know, it was the framework under which that was developed was to have a, you know, local group of experts that understand homelessness and the underlying issues, you know, provide input on the strategies. And so that was kind of the makeup of that committee that was ultimately the basis for the council's appointments to that group. So I hope, Vice Mayor, that that's addressed your question. But if there's any further follow-up, don't hesitate to let me know.
Well, thank you very much, David, for this clarification. And thank you, Renee, for participating and giving us some input that it's very necessary as we consider all these committees. I see that all Mayors, Christina and Angela, both all have hands raised, so please, all.
Hi, good evening. Vice Mayor Cruz, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'll be brief. I have just two things. First, I wanted to express an appreciation for your guys' meeting and your long day you put into this. And as the president of the Board of the Directors of the Cloverdale Senior Multipurpose Center, I want to express appreciation for Councilmember Lance and for you, Vice Mayor, you know, being liaisons to the center. I really appreciate your guys' focus on that. Second thing is just a question. I really, I missed what was said about the correspondence from my letter and when that was going to be discussed. If you could clarify that for me, I sure appreciate it.
David?
Happy to respond, Vice Mayor. The correspondence that was included in the packet was referred to, I think, what will be an upcoming item on the agenda under discussion and possible direction related to COVID-19.
Is that still this evening?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. But really, I just wanted to thank you guys for volunteering to be liaisons to the center, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Al. We have Angela on the line. Please go ahead.
I just wanted to shadow what Renee said. I think it would be very important for Todd to be considered for that Subcommittee because he does have the law enforcement background that will give knowledge and regarding crimes that are committed and how, what we can do and what we cannot do legally. I understand that the Chief of Police is very much aware of what, you know, he can do and what he, his people cannot do, but it doesn't hurt to have somebody else that has that expertise on that committee as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Angela. And I have one more comment by Christina.
Thank you very much for, for allowing me this time. I just wanted to also echo Al and thank not just the people, I mean, all of you for serving on the subcommittees and Vice Mayor and Todd Lance for the support for the Senior Center. The Senior Center is definitely the backbone to having the food, the food safety in our community. Melanie Hall has been wonderful and she, she truly has made a huge difference and so it takes a lot of support. And with that said, I also wanted to make a very important comment and just really plead to the Board that, or the City Council, that we, we stay clear from any conflicts of interests. We want to make sure that we don't have any open liabilities or, so if that can really be considered, that would be great. Thank you.
We have our city attorney on board all the time to make sure all that happens. Chief Ferguson, would you like to comment on any of this?
Well, for one, I, I thank you, Vice Mayor. I, I, I want to say thanks for the comments made earlier regarding the position for Councilmember Lance. I certainly don't disagree that the experience is also very beneficial, but I also agree that there is a process that we've always followed or that the city has always followed, if you will, on the Finance, Admin, Police Subcommittee meeting. But aside from that, I think Councilmember Lance and I have a good enough rapport that we can work together. I'm more than willing to meet with him, talk to him, and, and we can certainly put our minds together on this for any of the concerns that the community has. And I, I'm, I have no problem putting out any kind of statistics that anybody would like to see in regards to what our police department does to combat the issues that we're having with homelessness and crimes, because we do do a lot. And I think that unfortunately doesn't always get seen by the community, but I'm more than happy to provide statistics at any time. They're usually in my annual report and I'll be starting to work on that fairly soon for 2020 and they'll all be in there. But I can be reached anytime here at the police department and I would love to meet with you to have that discussion on that community member if she so wishes. That's the end of my report.
Thank you very much, Chief Ferguson. And I, I do know that you are very present and very available to all of us in council and to the community at large. Now, we're going to move on. Any other comments or any more discussion within council? So we'll just go ahead and move on to, what is this? We already did that. Subcommittee reports, I, and council reports. So I think with the Subcommittee reports, does anybody have anything in specific? Because I believe that all the meetings are in, on this schedule. Finance, Administration and Police, Melanie?
Nothing in particular to report unless you have any questions for me.
Anybody else? Planning and sustainability, any updates on that?
No, nothing, Vice Mayor.
Public Works, I don't have any reports. City Fire, we are on, we don't have anything to report and I know that we are on safe. School City, we will probably meet in March. And the Homeless Advisory Group, we are regrouping at this point, correct, David?
That is correct, Vice Mayor. I think, as underscored in my recent communication with council, you know, we'd like to re-initiate our Community Advisory Group meetings to discuss strategies for homelessness. Obviously, we've been pretty busy with a lot of emergency response, but we think it's, it's timely to restart our, our conversation about homelessness. So we'll be planning probably in, in February, March, restarting the Community Advisory Group.
Thank you.
And Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Cruz, if I could just, before we leave this topic of subcommittees and regional committees, I think we'd be remiss if we didn't thank our city clerk, Irene, for the wonderful calendar that she did, which is the last page here on our report number, page number 76. Irene, that's really helpful. So thank you for doing that. I'm sure you-
Nice and colorful. Thank you. Yes.
Thank you. That's all.
Okay. Any reports, council members? I submitted my written report. And so did Councilmember Bagby?
Yes, I, I did submit mine in writing, but I do want to just pull out one or, or two items specifically, just because I mentioned it at a previous council meeting, after four readings, the Sonoma Clean Power did pass a resolution during a JPA of JPAs for, for power acquisition. It actually wasn't, the, the Community Advisory Committee and a lot of folks did a lot of legwork on it and it's, it's, it's going to be a, a big entity, but it's really not as complex or different than what Healdsburg and the city of Ukiah are members of for, for their power acquisition. So I just wanted to let you just follow up on a fair warning that I gave you at a previous meeting and let you know that, that that did move forward unanimously. And then also in my council report, there's an opportunity to get the link to the 2020 SCTA, our CPA annual report. So if you're unfamiliar with those goings on, just that annual report is a great snapshot to kind of see what the agency has been up to and some things that we're working on for transportation and climate change coming up in the future. And if you have any questions on it, of course, just, you know, contact me anytime.
I, I do want to make a report, thank you, Melanie, that is zero waste recycling events have been canceled due to COVID. And I have posted that on my council member page and, and it is also posted on the city webpage and also the city Facebook page. So please, to the community, be aware that those changes have happened due to COVID. Okay. So we move on to legislative reports.
Vice Mayor, city manager does not have any legislative reports for council.
Okay. And city attorney?
Nothing tonight, Vice Mayor.
Okay. And so David will give us a little update on current emergency and will probably mention the special group by, for food security and the adventure with the Senior Center.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, members of council. I'd like to share with the council and of course, members of our community, just some updates on the COVID-19 pandemic. Start with just providing some, some reopening metrics. As, as many of you know, we continue to be in the tier one of the blueprint for, for opening, which means that COVID still is, is widespread in our community. And in particular, we are tied to the regional ICU capacity, which is the more restrictive, you know, requires more restrictions in terms of shelter in place. Currently, the regional ICU capacity for the Bay Area is 4.7%, which is below the 15% threshold. We understand that once you hit that threat, if you can hit the 15% or, or greater, that you can automatically, the, the stay-at-home order will be lifted immediately. That just happened, for example, for the Sacramento region. They exceeded the 15% capacity and the, the, the more restrictive stay-at-home order was, was lifted. In Sonoma County, we have a little bit better ICU capacity as of today. It was at about 6.9%, but again, it's below, below the 15%. In terms of some of the daily case data, we, we're currently seeing, you know, fairly high daily case data. Currently, we are at 40.6 cases per 100,000 and to move tiers from tier one to tier two, we must be less than seven. So we are, we're, we're, we're well above the, the seven cases per 100,000. So we're, we're really experiencing a number of new daily cases at this point. We are also above the, the testing positivity rate of, of 8% for the, the next tier. We are at 9.1%. As likewise on the equity metric testing positivity rate, we're at 14.6% and we must be less than 8% to move to the next protective tier. So I don't anticipate that Sonoma County will move to the next tier. Within the next two weeks, there's got to be considerable movement in the case data before we're able to move to that less than restricted tier. On, on the, on the positive side, there's a lot of work being done with respect to vaccine distribution in Sonoma County thus far. There's been just a little bit less than 12,000 residents in Sonoma County who have been vaccinated. We're in, currently we're in, I think, Phase 1A of our populations, which is, you know, targeting largely our, our medical community. I do want to note that sometimes when vaccines, because they need to be used fairly rapidly, become available, we are prioritizing our essential workforce for getting vaccinations and we were able to have two police officers as well as two dispatchers obtain vaccinations. So I think that's really good to see part of our essential workforce and our first responders receive vaccinations in, in Cloverdale. We're, we're, we're seeing a number of partnerships develop between the state and the county on terms of vaccine distribution. Safeway now is going to be vaccinating health workers in Sonoma County and particularly the Sonoma County Fairgrounds beginning today, as well as the 11 safeways throughout Sonoma County. There is also a effort by the county to do an outreach campaign. The County Board of Supervisors has partnered with Leap Solutions. Leap Solutions is a firm in Sonoma County or in Santa Rosa that is going to en- en- engage stakeholders to support, you know, equitable rollout of vaccinations in, in Sonoma County and provide education and information to the community and, and really try to engage our community in terms of support for vaccination, because there's, there's a lot of misinformation, there's a lot of concern about vaccinations and that seems to be the key to getting passed, passed this, this virus. In addition, there's also a lot of work happening with respect to, to testing. County has partnered with a firm, Curative, to offer testing. Unfortunately, Curative isn't offering testing within Cloverdale, but our federally qualified health center at Alexander Valley Wellness is offering pop-up testing on, on Mondays from 9:30 to 11:30. And there's been quite interest in, in getting additional pop-up testing within Cloverdale and we, I, I want to acknowledge Vice Mayor Cruz's work and, and lobbying, supporting additional pop-up testing in Cloverdale by County Health. County Health has indicated that they are working on trying to staff up the, the, and have, you know, increase their capacity to do additional pop-up testing. And so that's, that's in the works, but nothing to report at this, at this particular time. And the, the other item to report and provide an update on is that the Paycheck Protection Program has reopened and reopened this week. That does promote access to capital for our, our, our businesses that are certainly in need of financial support. The program is, is now expanded to provide additional support to, to businesses, including supporting 501(c)(6)'s, which includes our chamber. There's also funding for Save Our Stages, which is important for entities like our Performing Arts Center and our theaters. And I've been providing information to our chamber to get out to, to our theater and our, our Performing Arts Center. But the, you know, it's, it's important to take advantage of that additional PPP, because I'm, I'm sure it's going to be very popular. So Vice Mayor, members of council, that, that concludes, concludes my report on update on COVID-19. I did want to just mention Resilient Cloverdale. We continue to have weekly meetings on Tuesday at noon. All are welcome to attend. There's been really a positive conversation about responding to the needs of the community. One of the key focus areas has been food insecurity and I want to acknowledge that our Cloverdale Senior Center has dedicated a lot of time and staffed resources to helping with food distribution. There are food distributions, food distribution events almost every day of the week, except for, I think, Thursdays. And those, many of those are being led up by-
I distribute on Thursdays.
Sorry, Vice Mayor, I misspoke. Maybe it's Wednesdays is the one day that is, there's, I think, one day during the week, but I, I think that's the, the topic that Mr. Myers would like to kind of speak to, because there is concern that the resources for, you know, meeting our, our, our food needs are running short. We, we don't always know that there is going to be available food through the Redwood Empire Food Bank or from other non-profit organizations to, you know, address the nutritional needs of our community. And there's interest in just, you know, discussing how in the community we can, we can better organize ourselves and coordinate our, our food distribution efforts to, to, again, just make sure we are doing our best to address some of the food insecurity needs in, in our community. But I think that was the point that Mr. Myers wanted to address in his request for establishment of food task force, is that there's just an acknowledgement by council that there's a need and, and, and how can we reorganize city to address food insecurity. With that, Vice Mayor, that, that kind of concludes my report on both the COVID pandemic as well as reselling in Cloverdale, but I'm, I'm happy to ask or to respond any questions, council.
Any questions from the council or any comments? And I would go ahead and allow for Al to give us a quick overview of the project and please allow him to speak. Go ahead, Al, you're on.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor Cruz. And you can hear me fine. Thank you for a moment to talk about this. I did send a letter calling for a task force mission to be eventually eliminating, in our best, in our best hope, the elimination of food insecurity in the community of Cloverdale as a whole. I won't go through the whole letter with you. I, I did, I am on the Resilient Cloverdale Action Committee as well and I brought it up with them that it, I do believe that this should be rearranged a little bit, that instead of calling for different people to lead and for calling for a task force to be put together, taking into consideration the legislation that has to happen for that and the Brown Act and all of the specifics that have to be done to do that. I want to emphasize that I think- want to emphasize that I think that we are in a more urgent situation than that, because of the shortfall that we're going to run into when we run out of funding. So this work group, I proposed that we do a work group that I put together and that I'm willing to chair myself, at least for now, until somebody with more experience and is more capable can come aboard to handle that, and put a work group together that can help get us through this particular crisis, and develop the methods and the long-range thinking that we need to do to be sustainable as far as food insecurity goes into the future from now on. And some of the things that I wanted to make sure that I mentioned in the letter may not have been mentioned well enough. It was my first attempt at that. But I want Cloverdale as a community. I mean, my wife and I are looking at moving there. My kid has already put an offer on a house in Cloverdale. We're not here for a day and gone tomorrow. I want to let the council know that this came up when my wife and I were discussing at the end of last year, what we were going to do as far as our giving to our communities this coming year, and asking the Resilient Cloverdale people, who was feeding the kids that were going to school and getting most of their food from school? And I only ask that, and we ask that, because we came from a background where that was a problem for us when we were children. And if we didn't go to school, there was a lack of food, and there was huge food insecurity. So this is near and dear to my heart, in the sense that that's why I wrote this, and that's why I want to be part of this action, specifically getting out of the reactive mode. Because, let's face it, there are going to be more crises. There's going to be more emergencies. And we're going to be faced with having to take care of our community. And if we truly want to be a resilient Cloverdale, then we need to look at being sustainable and not relying on handouts. So that doesn't mean we can't ask for assistance from outside our area. But if we're going to be resilient, I want to put together a work group that can build the idea of how to do that. And instead of being reactive, be proactive. In my type of business, I'm constantly looking at the long range and how things can be done far out into the future, and sustained far out into the future. If you have any questions about the letter or my ideal, I would love to entertain those. I will say this. If you guys are familiar with the self-healing community model that Becky Ennis presented to the Cloverdale Senior Multipurpose Center, and probably to you as well, a perfect example of the type of thing that a self-healing community model addresses is how creating a lack of food insecurity will build and sustain a better Cloverdale and a better community, and a community where people don't go hungry far into the future. We have some prominent family members and citizens in Cloverdale who give a lot. We have a lot of 501(c)(3) organizations that give a lot. My idea is just simply to put a work group together, to bring those resources together, and brainstorm on how we can make it sustainable far beyond us.
Thank you very much, Al.
Thank you.
You have been an incredible asset to our community. We thank you very much. And I am glad that you're able to share the vision that this is not one group's problem, but it is a society-wide problem that we need to address with a long-term plan. And, you know, I started helping 12 families and up to 50, and that's just me. And there are many other programs in the center. We have a very vulnerable situation in Cloverdale. People are losing jobs. People are getting less hours. Housing has become a problem also. And there's no job security. So we do need to keep looking after our kids as a community, supporting one another, and supporting the efforts that everybody is putting forth. So thank you very much, and I look forward to continue to work with you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cruz. Thank you for the time. And you're right, we all have to pull in together to do it.
Yes. And I look forward for us to continue to work on these initiatives. There will be announcements on this regard, and I'm sure that we will share your information for anybody who would have some input, and who would be interested in working with the Core Group for Food Security in Cloverdale. So at this moment, I would like to ask for any council direction on future agenda items from council. Any comments or suggestions for any of us? I do have one suggestion, which is to review and discuss our governance manual. I know that Melanie and Gus have been working on it, but we, as a council, need to review this and make sure that it's up to date in terms of technology, in terms of new laws, in terms of all those aspects that were not conceived or even existent when it was first put together.
Well, Vice Mayor Cruz, you're absolutely right. And a few months back, quite a few months back, actually, we all had a homework assignment of reviewing the governance manual and making red line corrections, or giving our input on the different topics. Unfortunately, along came COVID-19 and a whole lot of other things, and it kind of fell by the wayside. So maybe we should just revisit that on a homework basis and individually get it into city staff by a certain deadline. So that would be my suggestion.
I'll make a suggestion. You know, we did start this out at Police Administration and Finance. I think that that's actually where it belongs. I think that the admin team needs to take it back up, because we actually did locate a number of really good example texts and different possibilities. And we just need to bring all that information back together again, address it at the, I think, address it at the subcommittee meeting, and bring some suggestions to the entire council, perhaps in like a workshop kind of environment where we can really, you know, go over things with a fine tooth comb. But it's really obvious that our current handbook is just woefully out of date. And just, it doesn't, and it doesn't even, I think it talks about faxes and things like that. So, yeah, it needs to be brought up to date as far as technology is concerned, but also, you know, where the laws are concerned, but also philosophically, there's, there are a lot better and more effective handbooks and creeds and codes of conduct that are posted on different city websites that, you know, all of the elected officials are asked to adhere to. And of course, then the public is asked to, you're saying, hey, these are our standards. We're asking you to behave in the same manner. So I think that it's a really, it's a good time to revisit that. But we have already done a lot of the research. It set it aside for COVID-19, and we need to pick it back up again.
Okay, so the teacher with the ruler here says that Mr. Kelly will give us a deadline, so that it also fits within the scope of your work, because we can say all these things, but I know that staff also needs to have their input on that. And we don't want to overwhelm you. So please give us a reasonable timeline for us as council members, and also for the staff. Always considering the staff and the incredible workload that you guys have to put up with and to complete. Another item that I would like to see, given that we haven't had enough water this year, is to have drought updates, perhaps that would fall under City Engineer Rincon to do that for us, and Public Works Subcommittee. And what else? We did have a bias training some time ago, and I think we need to start contemplating when is the follow-up to that. The situation in the country has become quite complex, and we need to keep up with the changes and the necessities that come about as such. Anything else from our members, or even from our student liaison, if she's still with us and awake?
Vice Mayor Chair, Vice Mayor Cruz, if I can, just real quickly, I think your request for an update on the drought conditions is very timely. And my recommendation, if it's okay with council, will be to add an item to the council agenda, maybe immediately following the status update on current emergency, is that there's also a status update on water conditions in Cloverdale. And then that will provide the opportunity for our city engineer to provide regular routine updates to council.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Melanie?
Vice Mayor Cruz, if you don't mind, Councilmember Bagby during closed session had suggested there was a workshop for the community and the schools to start figuring out the way to work together. So I don't know how she wants to word that, but I thought I would give her the opportunity before I butted in and did it myself.
Oh, certainly. This is going to definitely have to fit in with staff workload. But I suggested that we workshop, you know, what the barriers to, what is at the root of the school district's opposition for new housing, and how we can address those funding shortfalls, and those concerns, and how we can work together moving forward. So I would, I think that it's, considering that, at least it's somewhat anticipated that we're going to see some movement forward on housing. It's the sooner that we do it, though, the better, so that we can just better understand how we need to negotiate with developers, so that the schools get the resources that they need for potential new students. So, and I think we need to have a really solid workshop understanding, you know, what part straight-up development fees, what part an expanding property tax base has, and where exactly the shortfalls are, and potential funding solutions for that. And if we need to, if it's dire as it sounds, then we probably need to go to Sacramento and ask for a solution, because we certainly can't be building houses, we can't be building state mandate, state mandated housing if we don't have the resources for the services that those new housing units are going to be using. And that goes for everything. I think Councilmember Lance pointed out, it's like, we do that for water and for sewer and for a lot of the other services. And we need to have a mechanism to do that for schools as well.
That's definitely a multi-tier situation.
Yeah.
Where both the district and the city need to continuously work on the planning. At the same time, we definitely, I do believe, and this is something that, you know, I'm in the Redwood Empire Legislative Committee for Community Services, and this is one of the things that I'm definitely going to bring up, which is, how is it that small cities, especially rural and agricultural communities, must comply with state mandates that don't come with money?
Yeah.
And that typically goes to our basic, basic service of water and sewer.
That's basically what we spend most of our time at League of Cities on. Exactly that issue.
Exactly. And so it just becomes more of a salient issue in so very many tiers of our everyday life and local government. So, yes, very timely, Melanie and Todd. I definitely agree with everything you've said, because we are feeling it. And then we have situations like the water rates that happen because lack of activity in the past, and also because of state and federal mandates. And people need to understand where they all fall, and how we are all impacted equally. So we definitely need to look for solutions. Thank you very much. And if there's nothing else, I think that I am ready to adjourn this meeting. Anything else?
Vice Chair, if I can, just real quick, on the last item, understood council's direction to schedule a special workshop, or joint workshop with the school board. With your permission, what I would recommend is coordinating with Superintendent McLean, the mayor, and the school board president on a joint agenda, development of a joint agenda, and then work on a date that works for both council and the school board for that joint workshop. And then we can bring it back to council to confirm the date and time of the special workshop with the agenda.
That sounds good to me. That, and what are the other two items that we're going to add? The water updates and--
And the governance man--
Governance Manual, and we're going to contemplate a future follow-up training.
Yes.
May I make a suggestion, Vice Mayor? That might be, those two items, those last two items, it might be good to, it might be possible to do them at the same time, is to continue training on bias. And then, once we've, and so maybe do that training, and possibly on the same day, maybe on a quickly following up. Then with that information, look at the governance manual. I mean, I honestly think our governance manual can almost be tossed. I mean, it's pretty bad. It's pretty outdated. I think we need to start with a couple of examples that have been, that have been updated on a regular basis. And there are several of those out there. I've already submitted them to the subcommittee, so we can go back in the record, because we have an excellent clerk, and we can bring those back for review. And then, of course, if council members have additional examples that they really like, or, you know, pieces of governance manuals that they want to add to it, I think that that would be a good way to approach it.
I'm already tired, Melanie.
I know. I'm sorry.
Don't say all that. I mean, that's a bomb. It's like, you know, a day and a half of training.
Hopefully not.
Well, just one more thing, Vice Mayor, if I can. In addition to the bias training, there's also other training that's probably overdue. You know, I know we're all coming up on our Form 700, which is going to be due shortly, but there's also the sexual harassment training, the 123 training as well. But we need to start coordinating all of that, and maybe some type of a list of what's due, and we can go from there.
Well, we are already registered for the 20th, 21st, 29th, 28th. I mean, we are scheduled for all that training already. It's at the end of this month. If you haven't, make sure to check in with Irene. But I know that Todd, Melanie, and I are registered.
Well, I'll have to check and see if I'm registered. I'm sure I probably am.
I think Jason--
Irene will keep you in line.
Okay.
Okay, Irene. All right. Well, anything else? I think we are ready to have dinner. So I adjourn this meeting. Thank you very much for your support, and we look forward to seeing our mayor in the next meeting. And the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Nice job.
Thank you, everyone.